Alrighty, we are set and ready to go. It is ten AM. Um, and first on the agenda is WSU. And I see you on there.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I'm gonna turn it right over to Kella, our Noxious Weed Coordinator, and she has a bit of briefings for you.
Hello Commissioners, um, I have two briefing, briefings for you. Um, number one is an inter-agency agreement between Washington State Parks and Recreation Commission and the Mason County Noxious Weed Control Program to survey foreign control noxious species within state parks in Mason County for the period of March first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, within that briefing request form, um, there is the actual inter-agency agreement. Um, and this work will, uh, the budget impact will be, um, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, uh, total to be awarded to Mason County Noxious Weed Control Board. Um, seven thousand five hundred will need to be used before June twenty twenty-three when the biennium ends. Um, and that will require supplemental appropriation for our Mason County Noxious Weed Control Budget, and the remaining ten thousand dollars will be used from twenty forty-four through twenty twenty-five. Um, works in Mason County, um, special emphasis on Lake Isabella, as well as Belfair, State Park, Potlatch, um, and some of the Harstein Island State Park properties. Um, so that is briefing number one. I'll move on to the State, Washington State Department of Agriculture's Giant Hogweed Eradication, uh, project. We have been awarded a contract, um, for Giant Hogweed Eradication in Mason County for the period of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, that budget impact will include five thousand dollars total to be awarded to the board. Three thousand dollars will be used prior to, uh, within twenty twenty-three. Um, and that will require a budget revision, and then two thousand dollars will be used in twenty twenty-four to, um, continue Giant Hogweed eradication efforts. Um, and that contract is attached. Nothing particularly new with this contract. Um, this has been something that the Mason County Noxious Weed Control Board has partnered with WSCA on for quite some time. Um, and something a little new about this one is that this year we'll be doing an open house, um, where folks can come from the community and talk about Giant Hogweed. Um, I will be hosting that at the, uh, Public Works Conference Room. Um, more to come on that front. I don't have specific details yet. But, um, that'll be a chance for community members who might, uh, might have Giant Hogweed that we don't know about to come and get some more, uh, educational information about it. Yes, those are my two briefings. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners?
None for me, supportive of both items.
Oh, and I saw Randy nod, so.
Great, thank you.
All good, thank you.
Fantastic, thanks.
Just a, just a brief note, um, kudos to Kella for jumping in and filling in, uh, and really moving this program and making it her own. She's really taken on the grant side of things and really making those community connections count. So, congratulations, Kella, and as always, thank you Commissioners for your support.
And I love the idea of having a workshop. I think that's, that's great. Yeah, well done. Oh, and Mark, has it?
Thank you, Commissioner Trask. Um, so want to also mention that, uh, we have some openings on our weed board. Uh, so if the Commissioners, um, know anybody that is interested in, in getting involved in that process, uh, I do not believe that we have a quorum at this time. Uh, so definitely need to get the word out there, uh, to get individuals involved, uh, in that Noxious Weed Board. And, and the process associated with, um, getting appointed to that board is a little, a little different than other advisory boards that we have. Um, so would definitely recommend individuals that, uh, are interested in that to, to look into it and, and contact us, and we can help them through that process.
So I'm understanding we don't have a quorum to even have that, uh, a meeting with that board at this point? And, uh, how long have we had those applications out?
Um, so District Four and Five have been vacant since twenty twenty-two. There's a recent vacancy in District One. District Four and Five, um, District Four is north of Potlatch, and then District Five is, um, Belfair, Tahuya area. District One is Shelton, Matlock, and then south to the Thurston County border, uh, boundary. Um, and those applications have been out. We've been posting, um, and advertising in various, various avenues going to, um, community events and trying to kind of attract folks, um, to apply. Um, and they're required to be primary agricultural producers. So we've not had a quorum, um, since January, when, um, the District One position was vacant.
So primary agricultural, uh, producers, huh?
Yes.
Uh, tree farms, uh,
For interpretation.
Yep, Christmas Tree Farms, uh, Timberland is also considered primary agricultural production. Honeybees, aquaculture, shellfish, yeah, just in general.
Can I ask you to please, if we're, because it sounds like we're in a situation now, uh, where we gotta do something. Can I ask you to put together, at the most, one hundred words along with a, uh, link to the application itself and get that over to me, and I will put that out online. Maybe the other Commissioners can put it out on theirs as well, uh, because we can't have these groups, the citizens groups that can't meet, so.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
But keep it simple, a hundred words or less, uh, with a, with a link directly to the application.
Yep.
That's great. Thank you Commissioners.
I also have, uh, I have a meeting this week, um, where I'm presenting, let me look real quick.
On Wednesday.
The Republican Party Luncheon, uh, talking about our Advisory Board. So I would definitely up and bring materials, uh, for individuals that might be interested that are attending that luncheon.
Great, I will CC you on that email to the County Commissioners with associated flyer and information.
Thanks.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move on to the Clerk's Office. I see. Yep, there's Charles. Charles, go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, President, myself, my, uh, my Chief Deputy Clerk, uh, Terry Owen. Um, we are, uh, we would like to have, um, a security door, uh, with, with, uh, combination, um, as you enter from the lobby to the, uh, to the, the work area.
Right, because right now you have just a, it's like, it's like a pony door, right? It's just really small, not very secure at all.
Yes ma'am, no ma'am. Um, anyone, anyone can open the door and, and come on back, uh, and, uh, heaven forbid, uh, accost or assault any one of my staff. Um, so from a safety standpoint, I think we need to, uh, we need to, uh, change that back the way it was, um, quite a few years ago when the, when the Sheriff's Office was down here. They had a full door with, I believe they had a combination, uh, a lock so that the only people that would be able to get in here without our permission would be our staff.
Right, right, and I believe you've been working with Kelly?
I have, yes ma'am, and Kelly, Kelly gave me a, gave me a number, and I believe I put that on the, uh, sheet of approximately three thousand dollars.
Madam Chair, I just went for a visit over there too, and I was, I was blown away at the ease of access for somebody to walk in there. Being a half-door makes it so open for wanting, for people wanting to do it. You do it so quietly, just reaching over the door, even if it's locked, and just quietly walking and getting behind them. What a bad position to be in. And you, you as a citizen or somebody that does have any ill can, ill intent walks right past that door before they even get to the counter. So they actually have access to them before anybody can even deal with them. It's pretty dangerous, so I'll be in support of, of the expenditure of this three thousand dollars. It seems like a, a no-brainer after visiting over there.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well.
Okay, yeah, I know, I've, I've gone over there and I've opened the door myself and walked back, so. I, we definitely want to keep our, our people safe over there, and appreciate you, um, bringing this forward, and we'll get you a door, how about that?
Thank you very much. Uh, and Jerry sitting here as well, you can probably see her.
Before you leave though, I would like to bring something up to the Commission while I was there. It's something that I noticed. I'd love for us to have a further discussion on. We've done some, some changes and moving around people with the, you know, the purchasing and the expansion, the building ten, and we've always talked about space and what that would look like. They actually have, in walking through their, their area, I would like to see the Ethic Commissioners go, go take a peek. There's an area there that's used, I believe, by the, uh, District Court. It's a very small little area in between, but it stops them from being able to use two big chunks, uh, that would fix their, their space issue immediately just by finding another place for, uh, District Court to, to handle this. I don't think they even use this very often. It's in a bad location for them. Uh, it also gives a safety access for the Court's Office to be able to get around and get a second access out without busting down a door. They actually have a piece of plywood and some insulation that in case of emergencies to be kicked in. I'm not kidding you. So, uh, as we're looking at space, it would only make sense that, uh, I know we look at moving people all over the place to just keep them consistent with their offices, so it goes into a, a horseshoe. So if you would mind, when you get a chance to take a peek at that over there, maybe we can have a talk with Kelly as we find a new location for, uh, uh, for District Court and the use of that specific little tiny room.
May I say something, please?
Sure.
Um, one thing that we, we are, uh, concerned about is, uh, is the IS nine oh seven that we, uh, you know, for active shooter, et cetera. It says in there that we're required to have, or it's recommended that we have two, two entrances or two exits, uh, in the event something happened. We do not have that. Uh, we have, we have one exit, which is the way they come in, and, and the staff can jump out the window. Uh, other than that. So, so that being said, um, uh, I, I believe that that's important, that we, uh, that we, we create a safe environment for our staff. That's the period, that's it. And, and nothing dealing with ambiance, it's just dealing with, uh, you know, what's going to be safe for our people.
Right, oh, go ahead Kelly.
Uh, all that's in the plans. That's all in the works. As soon as, uh, building ten, we can get that happening. That is all in the works.
Okay, so we're gonna be able to open that up and just keep them all in that one corner and open that door for safety, or the a wall with a piece of plywood?
Absolutely.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, I think, I think I can speak for most of us here. We're all very excited to get District Court down to, um, their building to the District Court building, and then that opens up a lot of new areas and, um, possibilities. So I'm excited to get them moved down. And excited to get your office into, I, I could say whole again.
Thank you ma'am.
Alright, anything else for our clerk in his office? Alright, thanks Charles.
Thank you very much ma'am. Thanks, uh, thanks Commissioners, appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. You are next.
Okay, um, number one, uh, I'd like to shut down our buil, close our building for a half-day on March fourteenth, um, and take the staff up to Public Works and do training on SmartGov. So as you know, we've implemented SmartGov in twenty nineteen. Um, and we've worked these last four years on still trying to clean it up and utilize it, but we've gotten to a point now where we're ready to actually learn additional features that it has that we have not been using so that we can continue that path to getting all of our, um, permits available for applying online. And so in order to do that, um, we have, there's certain features that we have to learn how to use so that once our paper goes away, we know, like, when everybody's done reviewing something, and the permit texts can call folks to let them know their permits are ready to issue. So, we're gonna do half-day training. Um, I have a calendar or a agenda that I've drafted, and I can send that out, um, once I, I get it onto paper. Um, but that's for the fourteenth, it's a Wednesday, and it would be from noon until the end of the day.
I'm supportive.
It's all good with me.
I'm sorry, it's not a Wednesday, it's Tuesday. Tuesday happens to be one of our lighter, um, inspection days, so it helps the.
I was gonna say, that's even worse calendars. No, I, I'm supportive.
Okay, great. Okay, and then, uh, I would like to read a news release tomorrow, um, for, we have a Planning Advisory Commission opening. Isaiah Johnston had to, had to step down, and so we're gonna look for, uh, replacement there.
Sounds good.
And then I also, it didn't, it didn't show up here, but I just wanted to ask if any of the Commissioners, um, before tomorrow's public hearing on the Title Fifteen and Title Seventeen Amendments, um, regarding the Planned Unit Development Standards, um, for, for the county utilizing the, uh, City of Shelton's Planned Unit Development Standards, if you, if anyone wants a one-on-one or more information about that today. Or is, or.
If you, if you can give me a call after we're done.
Okay, I can do that.
I, I have a, a question. I only, it's, it's not that I have an issue with, with what it is, just one of the restrictions that happens if we do it in a certain manner. So I'd like just to talk to you about that for a second.
Sure, I can do that. And then I'll, next up is Marissa.
Hi Commissioners.
Hi Marissa.
My, uh, one item is hopefully I'm trying to get a news release on tomorrow's, um, agenda to read. It's about our Shoreline Development Website and User Guide, and, uh, the news release is just about getting, getting it out there so the public can comment for thirty days before we start, um, wrapping that up. So just hoping to get the news release on tomorrow's agenda.
Good with me.
Good, good with me, but.
Alright.
I, I, if I can though, Commissioner, I have a, something for the Commission on, on this issue though. Can I jump in now?
Sure.
So historically, you know, whenever I see this, I always get a little bit nervous, and I know Commissioner Shutey had to deal with some of this, uh, after the fact, uh. When I first, I was on the Planning Commission, it was interesting because when they first started working with Shoreline, we turned it into a project that should never have happened. Uh, we sent citizens out and they put together something that was that thick. We sent technical out, they put something together that was that thick, and then out of nowhere, somebody else added something that was that thick, and so we ended up with a shoreline that was this thick. And when we were done with it, half the people didn't know where half it came from. And I remember talking to Bob Benzie at the time, he's passed away since then, but, uh, Kevin may remember him. Great man, and I asked him for help once I became a Commissioner after dealing with this as a Planning Commissioner. I became a County Commissioner, and he asked me a very important question that nobody had asked at that time, and that was, what was broken? And I said, what do you mean? He says, the, the purpose of these updates is to actually make sure that, that it fits with what is required by the state law, federal law, and what was broken on that. Instead, we had re-completely recreated our, our whole Shoreline Master, uh, plan. Uh, it took two years, and that's why I know that Commissioner Shutey had to do that because we sent it and put it on his back. It took two years, and they had to go back and forth on more than just their regular meetings. They were meeting all the time, and I think we even lost some members because of the stress that put on them, as they removed everything that was not required by law and gave us the little plan we have now. Uh, and they even did some wonderful things where they traded things that, uh, were not required by law, but for example, they, they shortened down on the width of a dock, uh, if they were allowed to extend it out, and it worked very well. So I just want to remind us, or hopefully ask us, are we still in the same position the Commission was all those years ago? That our main job is to put in what's required by law, and not everything everybody wants. Are we shifting to become more of, uh, trying to capture other ways of fixing environmental or whatever outside of our normal taste of business? So I guess it's a question, is this Commission still where they were those years ago of what's required by law? Uh, with a few exceptions, if it, if there's a good argument for it, or the opposite of trying to open up and change it completely?
Yeah, I, I guess I'll jump in. Um, so my understanding was that that was, that was kind of the way we were operating, so I, I thought it was a, a limited scope process, and we'll see what comments come back to us, but I, I feel like that's the direction that we moved.
Yeah, I, I kind of felt like that was what we do throughout the county on most of our, our issues or anyway, you know, make it, make it as simple as possible, but still follow the laws.
I absolutely agree, and, and if us, by us saying that, that may help to make sure that something that happened in the past doesn't happen again. So it sounds to me like the Commission is still in the same position where simplicity and, uh, connected with the actual law is still our goal.
If I, if I could just say something, so, so this is not about changing the code at all. I just want to make sure the public knows that, that this, this is just a project that's trying to help illustrate the current provisions in a way that helps homeowners and their consultants understand it and apply for permits. So this has nothing to do with changing the code right now. I'm just, I just want to make sure that's clear.
No, and I understood that, but I do know that we take in information like that. It is put away and used during the time when we are going to look at it, which is not that far off.
And, and thank you, Marissa, for clarifying that.
Great job, uh, Marissa.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Luke.
Morning, uh, my name is Luke Scusi. I have taken over staffing of the Historic Preservation Commission from Michael McSims. Um, and I guess I got two items for you. The first one, um, for the March fourteenth agenda, I am looking for approval of twenty-two thousand dollars for, uh, this year's heritage grants that are awarded, uh, from the Historic Preservation Commission. So, the Commission budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars this past year, um, for grants for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um, got five applicants from nonprofits around the county requesting twenty-two thousand dollars in total, so, um, three thousand dollars left in bounds. Um, and we're hoping to award all those applications in full from what was requested. So we had four applications that requested five thousand and one that requested two thousand. And then, uh, I don't know if you, do you have any questions about the, any of the grants and stuff before I move on?
No, I'm supportive. I gotta tell you, Luke, you shocked me a little bit there. Your predecessor's been there forever, well before I was ever Commissioner. I never even contemplated the idea of being somebody else.
You gotta shake things up every once in a while.
You shook me up on that one.
Yeah, alright, so, yeah, as I said, um, that's for March fourteenth. Um, all the, all the, uh, grant applications are attached in the packet. Uh, the second item I have is a news release that I was hoping to read tomorrow, um, for the Historic Preservation Commission. We are, uh, launching a Building Structure or Place Plaque Program. Um, think of it as a, a simpler process than getting, uh, registered on the local register of historic places, but a way to acknowledge, um, the, the various sites of historic significance in the county with these plaques that we have, and I wish I had one that I could show on camera. I'll bring it to tomorrow's meeting, um, to read with the news release, but, um, the Commission's been working on this program for a bit, getting everything finalized, and we're looking to launch it and have applications for people to apply to, um, that we can award them with this plaque that they could then put on their building, structure, or place.
I'm supportive.
Me as well, great stuff.
That's exciting. Yeah, fantastic.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So it sounds like we have three, um, McKenzie, three news releases to add to the agenda for tomorrow.
Alright, that's it. Unless you have any other questions?
Do we have anything for Kell?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks Kell. Alright, next on the agenda is Public Health, Dave.
Hey, good morning Commissioners. So first thing on our agenda is our, um, draft update of our strategic plan. Now this, I can't even speak today, it's a Monday. Have to learn to speak all over again. So this, this plan is actually, uh, an update really of our twenty eighteen to twenty twenty plan. Uh, they got postponed during COVID because, uh, it was COVID. Um, and things are crazy. So we're back into that, that planning now. We have our four major areas that we're looking at as we go forward into the draft plan. Draft plan, if, if you look through it, you see how we come up through the process, the building process, mission, mission, vision, and values. Um, we took a lot of, uh, very unvarnished employee feedback and, and wrote into the plan. And then the last part of the plan are the work plans for this year. Now, each year after this, in December, we'll include this year, we will be doing the work plans for the next year. So in this plan, you're not seeing the whole set of work plans for the whole thing. This will be adapted as we go through the work year, and then in the fall, we'll be, uh, looking at those things coming up for the next year, because that's when we'll have our CONCON uh, amendments, and, and we'll know what our funding looks like for the, the next year. So, we'll be doing our work plans in December for the following year. So this document just has the work plans for this year with timelines and some measuring points that we can keep things on track. And really, it focuses around, uh, housing, uh, mental health, and, uh, substance abuse, converting over from COVIDs, we're working out of the, the COVID mission and into the, the Greater Public Health Mission, and then a focus on hepatitis C, which is part of our, uh, consolidated contract that, uh, we're required to be doing for Department of Health. So those kind of four big goal areas, lots of pieces that fit around it as you go through the, um, um, work plan, you see that we have everything from, from environmental health has tasks on there to our administrative sta, staff have tasks on there. Uh, but this is, this gets us back into the groove of doing a strategic plan every three years. We decided not to go with five years because so much changes in public health. You just, five years didn't make any sense. So we're gonna do it more often and in more depth.
I like it. I, I, I think it's, it's time that we definitely move out of the COVID response and on to, um, that we've got so many other nasty, nasty diseases around here, and so being, uh, I, I'm excited about you guys moving forward on that, or at the county moving forward on that.
I, I, and we are too. You know, we're, we're starting to fire up the community forums again, so, uh, on the twenty-first this month, we'll be having our community forums meeting again out of Alderbrook. Really starting to energize that work that we were doing just before COVID hit, and kind of blew our whole strategic plan up in twenty twenty. So we're trying to reactivate that, and, uh, you'll be seeing some exciting things coming.
What date did you say?
That's the twenty-first of this month at Alderbrook.
Or maybe next month.
Say again?
It's at this.
Uh, yeah. I'm already thinking we're in March, I'm sorry.
Don't make the year go by, Dan, it's mastering them.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's like a hundred days in January and twelve in February this, this year it seemed like.
Alright, any questions? Alright, sounds good Dave.
Okay, so with that, I'm gonna move on to Melissa who has three large pieces to add today.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, Dave mentioned I've got three items, so we'll start with the Housing Needs Assessment. So you may recall, I think back the end of twenty twenty-one, the county contracted with the FCS Group to conduct a housing needs assessment. We have received that final report. Um, the findings have been presented to the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board. I believe they also presented to the Board of Health in the last few months. So I am just sharing with you the final product, um, and seeking approval to go ahead and post that on the Mason County website um, in our housing section, and going forward, you know, we'll really use this assessment to do a lot of strategic planning, some prioritization for housing and behavioral health. Um, Dave, I think you mentioned you have some people that you'll be able to share it with on the building side, um, and it will ultimately um, be used to kind of inform the housing section or the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan as that gets updated in the next, I think it's this year. Any questions about that?
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Okay, uh, I'll go ahead and move on to our Youth Cannabis and Commercial Tobacco Prevention Program. Um, we are just seeking approval for this contract. We've received it from the Choice Regional Health Network. Um, we, this year, I believe we get about fifty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to do our youth substance use prevention and education programming. So we would just move that to the March fourteenth action agenda for approval.
Are we still working with Mr. Apple? Out of curiosity.
Uh, Jerry Apple?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, he is really, um, he partic- Yes, yes, he is really, um, he participates regularly on the Substance Use Prevention Coalition programs.
He always has. He's he's a great asset to our community.
And he's been a really great connection with the school districts.
Sounds good.
Other questions about this one? Okay, um, finally, the Consolidated Homeless Grant Contract Amendment, the Department of Commerce, they had some supplemental funding from last year's operating budget. So this amendment would award about seventy-six thousand dollars in additional funding to Community Action Council. Um, and that would be used for rent assistance, prioritizing households that are enrolled in the foundational community support employment programs, who are also eligible um for the Housing and Essential Needs Program out of Community Action Council. So for this one, we are asking to move this immediately to tomorrow's action agenda and just the reason for that, um, the urgency is that it's a very short funding cycle. These dollars only go through June of this year. Um, and we just haven't had the opportunity to brief this in February. Is that something that we can get approval to do?
I'm supportive of putting it on.
Okay.
Melissa, when when you have time, uh, this is the program that I have been asked so many questions on over the years, and I have I do not have the knowledge to explain to people some of the uh ins and outs on this. If you have time in the near future, I'd like to sit down with uh you or maybe the commission wants it. Uh, I'd like to have a briefing on exactly what we're doing with all this. What are all these different pockets do uh and how it functions? What are the benefits? And some of the disadvantages that needs to be fixed, because I get asked a lot lately, especially this last year and a half.
Absolutely, I can do that.
I think um Commissioner, I think it'd be great to do that as part of a briefing. Um, I I hear a lot about this in the Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board, but it's always good to have a refresher and then I think to be able to do it so that the public has an opportunity to go back and review the presentation as well. If 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 you're both open to that, I think that would probably be a a good use of our time in the next few weeks.
I'm very open to it. If we do that, can we actually uh if you don't mind, let's give her enough time to do a thorough presentation and lock out a uh at least a half an hour, if not an hour on it, uh, or however much time you think you need to fully vet us and and educate us on this, because there's so many parts to it.
I need a visual. I think a flow chart is really helpful. We get a lot of calls in for really unique situations, and sometimes I have to take a step back and figure out, okay, who do I call first um for this specific need? Which agency is the most appropriate to assist with this? And uh, this is actually very timely, because part of our work plan for community health is actually getting some onboarding and orientation materials ready, so that if there's any new people, new staff, new electeds, we have those resources readily available, and everybody is getting kind of a consistent message and training on all of the material.
Well, that would help us. Yeah, that would help us. If you don't mind, make the materials available to us a little early, because we'd actually probably hold on to those materials and use them as a tool, because people are asking us these questions. We can say, well, this is what we see here. This is what we have here, or I don't see any part of this, but we can call. But uh without something like that in hand and somebody describing it, uh, I actually feel off to the side to say, yeah, just give them a call, and I don't like being that guy. I like having some knowledge of it myself.
Okay, happy to, happy to get this on um in upcoming briefing.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
That's all I've got. If there are any other questions.
Any questions for Melissa? How about any questions for Dave?
For me.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, we, let's see, do we have Loretta on here? Yes, we do.
All right. Uh, let's see if I've got Mike on here. Maybe? He's here.
We're here.
Good deal. Well, Commissioners, if it is all right with you, what we'd like to do is start with the discussion item first and um kickoff with recommendations for programming the one point oh four million dollars that was included in Public Works Budget as part of the budget decisions, and thank you very much. And so now we've developed a list of projects and reviewed those with Tip Cap and would like to present those to you Commissioners and gather your comments and input and hopefully um get some projects on the books to move forward this year.
Sounds good.
All right. And Mike did prepare a list of those projects and they amount to around eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, leaving a bit of contingency. And Mike is certainly happy to run through and answer any questions or give you a quick overview of the the proposed projects.
Yeah, up uh up front here, we have uh Coqualm Road, we have Rock Creek Bridge, it's a mile post five point eight two, right about Rock Creek Road. Uh, the timber superstructure is failing, and so we're in the process of trying to acquire some uh replacement structure. This is a short span bridge, so therefore it's not uh available for any funding, any grant funding, so we have to do this with our own funds. So this happens to work real well for us to have this extra funding. So uh, Sko Comish Valley Road, Vance Creek Bridge, Vance Creek Divide Bridge is a uh structure that is gets a lot of impact from drift. Um, coming down Vance Creek itself uh comes to buy and and damages the the uh actually pre-stress concrete girder, and so we're proposing to actually replace that for around a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, North Shore Road, Tohoya Post Office Bridge, Caldervin Creek, if you haven't heard of that, um, we're looking to bring in the engineering staff down to make a proposal to raise that structure or replace it. Uh, again, that's a a single span, short span structure, so it's not uh uh there's no grant funds available. We have to use our own funding for that. And again, we're looking about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, Lakeland Drive, uh, if you've been driving on that any, uh, it needs to be um paved, and so we're looking at uh doing that with our own county forces. Um, materials would be about sixty-three thousand dollars. Homestead Drive is uh right next to that, and again, that's about thirty-one thousand dollars in asphalt. Uh, we're estimating there. Uh, North Shore Road, Little Shoe Fly Culvert, which is one of the um problem areas left on North Shore Road uh for causing flooding and damage to other people's properties, and we're looking at purchasing the structure there for about two hundred thousand dollars, and then we would actually install it with county forces. And then Belfort Tohuya Road, uh, that's about mile post eleven point four nine. Uh, they call that Schoolhouse Culvert. Why? I don't know, but uh, it goes underwater. Um, and uh, we're, we've come up with a design to raise about a thousand foot of that road and raise that structure um up to match the existing. We're in the process of doing permit work for that. Um, and that would be about a hundred thousand dollars in materials and uh using county forces to that. Uh, Greatview Loop and Lynch Road, uh, both of those are shoulder paving projects. Uh, we've got requests uh in the past for Greatview uh through Tip Cap, and we've also got requests uh on Lynch Road uh through uh petition from the uh property owners. That's uh, that's from Arcadia down to the Boat Launch, is that stretch? And we'd look at doing uh one side for now uh for about twenty-two thousand dollars in materials and using county forces on both of these projects. That leaves us about a hundred and twenty-five thousand left over for contingency, because there's always contingencies. Um, but I think uh overall, we've spread this out and and uh getting multiple projects that way. I'm done.
I'm sure.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of different things. One, uh, on the uh North Shore Road Tohuya Post Office Bridge. You know, you, that one, as you know, there's been a lot of community uh involvement, questions on that one. So we're not gonna run into anything if we just do this on our own and raise this, uh, is there, are we gonna run into any type of requirements for if we move it to make it even larger uh for uh salmon habitat? Or are we gonna be able to get away with doing just what we need to do on this bridge?
We should be able to get away with what we need to do, because we're gonna leave the existing footings where they are. We're not gonna change that that at all. We're just going to elevate the superstructure uh and and then uh increase the height of the existing footing. So we should be able to do that without with with minimal cost and minimal impact.
Smart move. I like it. Uh, the next one, Homestead, uh, down there, hopefully this, I know you're gonna be fixing it, but that alligator in issue is a underground water issue. The developer out there had told me about it years ago, and it keeps coming up. Hopefully, we look at what the underlying issue is at the beginning of that road and try to figure that out and uh fix that water incursion area.
Yeah, it's definitely a water problem.
Yeah.
No doubt of that.
And so if we can make sure that when we do this, we don't just cover it, that we've tried to find the solution too. The next one is on the Greatview Loop Road. When we did uh Chip Seal over there, I was really blown away, and we did an excellent job. We did it very, very timely. Uh, very clean, I, but I was shocked with how many people were upset during that process. And I didn't understand it, and even after it was done, I still couldn't understand it. But I do know that it occurred. I'm thinking and and wondering if you can consider uh meeting with uh the port or something out there and have a community little town hall. Let them uh know what we want to do on this, because I think this is a great project also. But it'd be nice if uh they had some heads up and got some community buy-in before you start the project instead of trying to fight it afterwards. I do know that the person on the committee uh does live out there and that bicycles and the use of that is very important. I just think that we want to make sure that we get some buy-in as well from the community, so they know what you're doing and how we're doing it. And I think they will give you the buy-in, but I would hate just to just do this without some type of notice and discussion with them as a community.
Okay, yep, we can do that.
I see Kel's got her hand up.
I'm Kel Rowan. I am a resident of twenty-two East Ruby Road off the Greatview Loop. And I have a question for Mike Collins regarding the shoulder, because it is from Stadium Beach West um north to where it meets up with Highway Three, does have shoulders on both sides, or are you talking about then paving from Highway Three on the south end?
The south end.
Say again?
Yes, the, yes, the south end, about one point three six miles uh in on the south end will match up with the existing wide shoulders. So yeah, we talked about paving both sides about uh, we're, our our proposal is five foot on each side, but uh but at minimum, we get, you know, three or four feet, if depending on what's obstructions or anything. Looks like it's pretty clear we can get it.
Okay, that's excellent news. Uh, my husband will be particularly thrilled since he bikes on that almost daily. And is not able to go to Highway Three on the south end because of the no shoulders there.
Yeah, a lot of uh, a lot of people uh use uh this as a detour to get off of Highway Three. So if we, it it would be good for everybody.
All right. Any other questions for Mike? All right, Loretta, here. Well, great. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for the the good suggestions for community outreach on on Greatview and others. We will put the money to good use and and put it to work.
Yeah, Loretta, I do have one question. Can you check with um like the PUDs and and others? Um, with the Public Works Board, we've been really concentrating on Dig Ones. And so i- if there's a bunch of projects going on in that area to to work together with the PUD or Hood Canal, or you know, any others that might be doing projects out there, so that all the work is getting done um at the same time.
Currently, yeah. Yes, absolutely. We um share our six-year and our annual construction programs regularly with our our utility partners and then um at a staff level to staff level, we've got ongoing conversations about what's in the hopper and coming down the road and try and do our best to give good advance notice. And PUDs are good about corralling us as well. Hey, we heard you had a project coming coming up. What's going on here? What do we need to know? So um, but there's always room, obviously, right, for for increasing and improving communication. And yeah, look, excited to um hear a little bit more about Dig One and we always want to do as much as we can in one shot rather than disrupting the public four or five times, right?
Right, right. I I'm I'm pretty darn sure that the public appreciates that as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll I'll send you some information that I received from Commerce. Um, they're doing a pilot project in Lewis County, so if we can
Nice.
I would love to jump on, jump on the the projects before it's, before the pilot project is how should I say this? Before the legislature decides that they need to tell us what to do, I'd rather us show that we're doing it before, especially if it's a good idea.
Yeah.
If it's a bad idea, let's let's avoid it, but if it's a good idea, let's do it.
Yeah, great. Yeah, it's um recently come up um with some of the FEMA work that we've been working on, so um that might be a a good example. Yeah, look forward to learning more about the Dig One.
Yeah, yeah, fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and then the next discussion item, Commissioners, we were getting ready to um submit a briefing for appointing SWAC members, and if I can share my screen real quick here. I think. Possibly?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we um are close to filling some vacancies on the SWAC. And what you see here, we've got some members that have reapplied. And we've got Chad White and Delroy Cox, who are from the solid waste industry. And Commissioner Trask, you indicated you would like to serve as the local elected, yay. And then we have Linda Links, who is also reapplied for the SWAC. And we have a new applicant, Thomas Duffield, who's applied and is residing within District One. So that leaves us with some vacancies. And um it was an opportunity for us to retake a look at what the the RCW says in terms of membership and makeup, and just wanted to do a quick review with you Commissioners to make sure we're we're all on the same page and we're good with the our our appointments. So a minimum of nine members per RCW and a mix of citizens, public interest groups, business, waste management industry, agriculture, and local elected public officials.
Yeah, just to to put it out there real quick, if another Commissioner feels strongly that they would be on, like to be on that committee, um.
Get down with your bad self, Commissioner Trask.
I concur.
And and this also frankly could be somebody from the city as well, right? You know, so that could be a a potentially another local elected that could serve. Um, and then I did not, I'm sorry, get Tessa on here, but we also have an application from Tessa Halloran representing WSU Extension, and she's got great experience that would be helpful to the the SWAC as well. And um, I guess maybe that's what led me to the question about assignments and districts and all of those good things. So we've got similar to Tip Cap and other committees, representation from each Commissioner District, and um.
Does she live here and what district is she in? If she does?
I'm not certain. I think Tessa filled her application out with the the address from the WSU Extension, which of course they serve countywide, right? All of the the citizens of Mason County.
Yeah, but on the SWAC, doesn't have a a requirement of Mason County resident?
Not, no, not necessarily. And I don't believe in our um the the appointment, like our um resolution for the SWAC. I don't believe it said that they had to be a Mason County resident. So that's the question, Commissioners. Um, do So that's the question, Commissioners. Um do you want, what's your um? Would you like to leave it flexible so that we can appoint? Um, do you want Mason County residents that would limit some of the business representation potentially?
So I I've, you know, initial blush, you know, I think having it be a little bit more flexible is a price benefit with this group, given that we do have industry folks that are represented on there who do business in Mason County that are subject matter experts on solid waste and that, you know, I I I wouldn't want to disrupt that sort of longstanding process. So I I I would probably err on the side of a little bit more flexibility.
Yeah, I would agree. I I um attended the the last meeting and it was it was, it's awesome to see how many people are excited about waste. I don't know if that sounded right or not, but but to see how people bring their um expertise and it it's it's across the um the county. And then there's also others from other areas too, I think. Um, don't we have somebody who's from Republic Services also on there?
From uh Waste Connections. So Delroy, is that who you're referring to, Sharon?
No, didn't we have um?
Oh, yeah, Zach showed up and typically Steve attends as well. So we've got folks that are not necessarily appointed members, but definitely participate and bring their expertise to the table. Yes.
Right.
Then one of the things that that will, for I would mean, I'm you you might want to just check with Tessa and see where she resides and that might satisfy some of those concerns. But, you know, it says a minimum of nine members. You know, if we wanted to, if we wanted to look at, you know, expanding beyond the nine um and still maintain the the districts um makeup that we have on there, that that might be an option that provides a little bit of extra opportunity to serve on there without jeopardizing a um a resident spot on there.
So I I attended those, some of those meetings years ago and was highly impressed with their professionalism and the knowledge. Uh, I remember my concern back then, my worry was that we had individuals that actually profit from the decisions that are made there uh actually on the board representing them. But the professionalism I saw was well above board on any of that. Uh, so I walked away without any issues at all. But with that being said, I have also learned always still keep looking, always still keep paying attention because sometimes it does wear its head that way. And having a group that is controlled by the locals that it's representing uh is definitely highly preferable to me, because the decisions they make affect all the people here, not just the companies that work that they work for. As I said before, I never saw them cross that line. But that was yesterday. They're still today. There's still tomorrow and different people come in. Uh, with the old expression, uh, good fences made for good neighbors and and good policies are good fences. So I think we just need to be aware that that's always a possibility and keep an eye on it.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Richard, any two cents to add on this?
Maybe Richard? Get enough people for a steady quorum.
Yeah.
That that, you know, it's a it it that'll ease a lot of frustrations and make it a worthwhile committee.
Now, it used to be completely full, because I I was amazed that that many people would show up to discuss that particular issue. Uh, and the room was full back then. So, yeah, maybe we need to do something to entice them in uh uh cookies and and coffee, I guess.
Right?
That's like talking about waste and snacking.
Yeah.
I'm sure Mark will have it on his list to add, right? Your your recruitment list when you're out and about.
Absolutely. And we can have a during those during those events, we can uh we can have special recycling available to show people how the things that they can compost versus.
Exactly.
Uh, I think that that's really what Tessa brings to this group, right? So her knowledge of the Master Gardener Program, um composting, recycling, how to how to prevent or uh avoid putting items into our um into our our solid waste streams when they could be composted and dealt with at home, so.
Yeah, and yeah, WSU Extension has always been a great participant and and partner, so glad to see that continue. Absolutely.
Right. I think one thing that was brought up at the meeting too was was a tour of the recycling center. And I know I would be. I'd I would love to take a tour like that. And so um maybe we could offer that to the other Commissioners as well if they'd like to attend a a recycle tour.
Yeah, that sounds great. I know that uh Kevin and his team have been really working hard on um improving the sites and um hopefully you will notice a dis- a difference.
Right. Well, I see Commissioner Shutey had his thumb up, so I think he would like a tour as well.
I've been there and done that, but I guess I could do it again.
Do you mean like the county one or?
Looking at other recycling centers and stuff. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I've done all of our facilities. Um, so, yeah.
Yeah, and then uh one quickie other solid waste plug. Um, I know that Kevin is working on the briefing for the next round of our coupons. So look for that next week. And I know Commissioner Trask, you were asking about that just recently, so we're we're ready to move on that.
Yay.
Yeah. Yes, just in time for spring cleaning, right?
Well, after the snowstorm.
I was gonna say, maybe. Because I'm looking at the snowy window here.
Right.
All right. Well, with that, next up, I'll go to our uh requested action items. And Mike has a few here. The first one is a grant application for our safety improvement program.
Yeah, so everybody, anyway, uh we this becomes an opportunity for the Highway Safety Improvement Program. A grant application is due in March, March fifteenth. Uh, this year we've selected uh Shelton Matlock Road uh from about Deegan all the way out to Highland, which is almost six miles. Uh, the project would consist of of cleaning up the shoulders and paving the shoulders about five feet wide on each side. Uh, we would be replacing uh some guard rail. And then in certain cases, we'd be removing long sections of guard rail and installing uh potential crash cushions around the utility poles that are that would be uh within the clear zone. Uh, this project is about one point four million dollars. Um, we have reviewed it to through Tip Cap and uh we would like to send in our application.
I think it's awesome. Commissioners.
Good.
Hey, great. Thank you. Next up is um notice of county force work completion and what how much, how much county force work we completed last year. And this is part of our report that we prepare for CRAB each year.
So under RCW thirty-six seventy-seven zero seven zero, which everybody will remember because it's a quiz later. Um, we have to report county forces work done in the prior year. So in two thousand twenty-two, uh, we use county forces to install uh Katy Creek Box Culvert on the North Shore Road. Great Bend Box Culvert, but again, on the North Shore Road, we converted both California Road and uh Sunnyside from gravel to uh chip seal. And the total was about six hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars of county forces work. So we uh potential to do one point two million. So this year we'll try to get closer to that.
Great, great job by the road crew.
Good project.
Agreed.
Okay, the next item, Commissioners, is a request to add the Rock Creek Bridge replacement that Mike touched on um at the beginning of the briefing and to proceed with purchasing the structure.
Yeah, again, we uh we have Co-Calm Road, Rockford Bridge, uh mile post five point eight two. Uh, we have concrete um abutments and we have a timber superstructure. Over time, the 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 superstructure has been uh had some repairs done on it and uh and it's it's just deteriorating to the point that we would like to, since this is such a main um high-volume log truck road, we would like to replace this. And so we initially would look for some grant money on this, but it's a short span bridge, and so there there is no grant money. So the proposal is to leave the concrete foundations and and remove the timber uh superstructure off there and replace it with a uh prefab metal bridge. And we've got uh several bids for that. The low bid was uh True North uh just over sixty thousand dollars. And they're uh the really important part of it is there, there were only, I think they're like fourteen, sixteen weeks out for delivery. Uh, it's where a couple of the others that we looked at were uh uh a year out for delivery. And so this is something we'd like to do with our own county forces uh this summer. And so we're, our request here is is that uh this is part of our one million dollar operation. Uh, we'd like to establish the CRP twenty forty-eight and uh give us the authority to award the little bit and schedule a project.
Good for me.
Good with me.
And excuse me, I I think it's very cool and very, I I want to say um we're we're able to use our county resources, which saves the county a lot of money. So kudos out to to you, Mike, and to our road folks, because you guys do a great job and you are saving us money. Mark, your hands up?
Thank you, Commissioner Trask. The uh, yeah, Mike, so so we would plan on using our own county forces for the installation?
Yeah, the the structure's eighteen feet long and thirty feet wide, comes in three pieces. Uh, they're about six thousand pounds apiece. Our two twenty-five excavator can handle them easily. What we do is propose to uh close the road for a week. We could remove the existing um um timber structure and then install the new one. Uh, it comes with a corrugated metal deck and what we do is it pave right over top of that.
Cool. And do you do you have the map on this one, Loretta, that we were looking at the other day? On the screen?
Yeah, bear with me here for a sec.
I just think that my my point in bringing it up, Commissioners, is I think that this project is gonna um definitely require a a little extra in terms of notifying the public about what's going on. Uh, because the location of this bridge, um the we were trying to look and see where the where the detour would be. Um, and I'm sure Mike already has it figured out. He wasn't involved in our conversation, but um it's it would be something that they'd have to close down for a week. And if this is a major thoroughfare, making sure that everybody is aware of when that happens and and can plan accordingly.
Yeah, the the detour will, sorry, this is just kind of showing a tighter view of the vicinity. But most likely, folks will need to uh come out Highland to avoid the project. And I believe it'll be about what, Mike, a four-day closure?
Yeah, give us a whole week.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, we 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 think we can get it done in four days, but yeah, we we would tell them uh uh the whole week, so.
Great.
And we'll get, once we get, uh, you know, once we get moving forward here, we're gonna have uh a structural engineer's got to come in and we got to look at this uh the bridge, how the connections are. There's no plans to the existing structure, so uh if there's drift pins, how to set up, different things like that. So all that stuff needs to be addressed ahead of time, so we can do it in a in a short period.
I gotta say, I I appreciate what you're doing, Mike. I I I hope we will be open-minded enough to do quite a few of these in the near future, because I believe that you found kind of a little bit of a loophole. And I have a fear that that loophole will be closed before too long. The way you're doing it is very intelligent and it will save us a bunch of money. And if that gets stopped in the near future, we're gonna have to expand those things. It'll change all the all the things, the numbers we're looking at today. So I appreciate you doing it and look forward to you bringing us many more of those in the short term. Makes me wonder about some of the other ones that we've looked at, how many of them could be extended to just raising it and dropping another metal one over the top of it. So please consider to do, keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. I got about, I got about a half a dozen of them lined up.
Yes, he does. Yeah, and then Commissioners, I don't have it right handy, but Mike put together a summary, a comparison of the county force work and um for Katie and Great Band and the Uncle John's upper. So you can take a look at what the total costs were for um our forces completing the project versus going out to contract for similar type structures.
Well, and it'll continue to go down as they learn to do it. I do know for a fact that some of the things you asked for to do, they'd never done before. And you're always better at it when you're done than you were when you started. So you've got a whole group of people that are learning how to do a lot of stuff they hadn't done before. So you're gonna save us a lot more money in the long term on your fifth, sixth, seventh, or tenth one.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then just as a as a closing reminder, this is, this is one of those projects that we're able to do um because we, because the commission decided not to divert as much of the road tax levy money uh into the general fund, so. Lots of lots of projects out there for this type of work and uh and appreciate the Commissioners um willingness to to put those roads dollars back into the roads.
Yes.
That's a great reminder, Mark. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, next up, Richard has a purchase of grinder pumps.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's that coming year again when we're trying to get our bulk purchase of grinder pumps out. Um, we're looking at buying uh seventy-five grinder pumps. Uh, we're our three-year averages, we've been replacing about seventy-two dry wells and eight wet well pumps every year over the last three years. And so we're looking at buying, we'd like to purchase sixty-five dry well and uh and ten wet well pumps this year. Uh, we we got our first bid from Correct Equipment, our sole source supplier. And it was a little over uh two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and that was their first um offer of a bulk purchase. Um, I gave him a little beating around the head and neck with a pencil and asked them to use a sharper pencil and they came up with this. It dropped a a good twenty-some thousand dollars more. Um, so that's what they're offering us this year.
I'm very supportive. Thank you for doing that.
Yep, great, great plan and it's necessary. It's not something that we can go without. So, great job.
Thank you.
And then when they go bad, you need to have them on hand right away. So we can't wait for, wait for something to show up, so.
We do.
Proper planning and and Richard and his team are are always looking to to those things to um ensure that we're prepared for when those things happen. So appreciate that, Richard.
Well, I appreciate the ability to have a bolt like this on hand. It it takes a lot of stress off.
I still hope we're looking into buying the uh a special type of the little one-man crane to be able to set them in the near future. Maybe a used one or something.
Yeah, we're taking a look at that, Commissioner, and um kudos to Richard as well about taking a deeper dive on um why and when and how frequently we are replacing grinders. So this is a, this is a hefty part of our budget. And so is there something we could, should be, or doing differently here? And how does this stack up? And so um that's, that's underway right now as well. So thank you, Richard, for that.
Just another mystery to try to solve.
Add them to our list, right?
Yep.
Was that a Scooby-Doo reference?
Great. Well, we'll decorate our one-man um hoist Scooby-Doo style mystery wagon. Okay, Commissioners, I believe that is it for our agenda.
So just a quick question, too. I've been receiving pictures of roads in Mason County. How are we doing with our roads during this snowy storm?
I think we're doing quite nicely, I hope. I think we're doing quite nicely, I hope. Jeremy's been cursing it, but other than that. He said he thought we were through with winter. So we've been starting. A bit early, as you probably know, Commissioners, a bit earlier than normal to get out and make sure that the roads are treated. Ahead of the the commute. We had some weekend call out as well, so that's that's what we're up to. This has been, even though it's snowing, it's been a relatively easy event compared to prior events. It's manageable, you know, it it melts. We're able to to clear it pretty handily and get our primaries and some of our our secondaries taken care of. So hats off to our crews and. Hats off to the the drivers. I think that there's been a lot of great social media media communication about. Take it slow, back off. Give some room, don't be out and about unless you need to, all of those good things. Make sure your vehicle's equipped. For winter weather driving. And that helps as well. I think a lot of the the accidents that we see are from folks oftentimes not being prepared. Or or not following safe driving rules, right?
But you know, Loretta, we're missing one major thing during this whole storm and that was phone calls. I have not had one. Single solitary call or complaint this time, not even one. I can't tell.
Don't don't say it.
I can't tell you where you missed it and I didn't get one, but I have not had a single one. So there's gotta be something going on out there to where they're. They're way ahead of it because that just has never happened in all my years here. Ten years, eleven years, that's never happened.
Great. Well, let's let's hope we we keep on that trend.
It's supposed to be cold the next couple of days, too.
Yes, it is. Yeah, yeah, I think we're in for it for the rest of the week, it looks like, a bit to some degree or another. But I do, it's it's great to have the the posts from the Sheriff's Department and others about. Just just those little steady reminders about how to be prepared for winter driving.
Yeah, I think Mason County rocks it. All right, do we have anything for Loretta?
Yeah, I had one item. Loretta, a couple of weeks ago, I heard back from Terry Lager from the Appleberry Woods HOA.
Yes.
Yeah, and so it looks like they're wanting to move forward. With their road improvement district and I was just hoping that you could get back into touch with them and. Kind of see where things are at and then bring it back to us for some more discussion.
Yep. Yeah, I did speak with Terry earlier. I can't remember if it was the end of last week or the beginning of this. And we will plan to brief on Monday, Commissioners.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner, Ned, anything for Public Works?
No, just to thank you. Like I said, I've never had no call.
You know what's gonna happen when you get off briefing today.
I was thinking about it after I said it, because now that I said it, it's actually on there. I know there's gonna be at least one or two just calling. Just to be a little bit of a jerk about it, just so that I can't have that.
All right. Oh, I the one thing, Commissioners, we met with the the city last week and. DOT was there and they were talking about some scoping. For improvements to SR three from the Coal Road Exit. Up to. Arcadia area. And I was really surprised that. It was such a high accident corridor, high enough that it warranted safety improvement funding. For DOT. So they're beginning to scope some of that work and shared some preliminary. Concepts and data to with us last week. And so keep your eyes open for some more information on that.
Oh, that's fantastic news.
It is. It it really is. Lots of rear end accidents and several. Several serious injury accidents. So people are exceeding safe speeds on that corridor. Lots of conflict with high densities in driveways. Single lane, so that's that's what's driving those rear end accidents along that corridor. So definitely excited to see some things move forward there.
It's very good news. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, anything else for Loretta? All right, thank you, Loretta.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners.
All right, Mark, take her away.
Thank you. We've got a quite an agenda here, so just making sure I see. Mr. Taylor on the phone, are you here, John? Yep, there he is.
I am, sir.
All right, you want to talk about Parks and Trails Advisory Board applicant?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. I have Dennis Hamilton's application, which I'd like to present to you for review and consideration. For the Mason County Parks Board.
Do we still have somebody from the Salmon Enhancement with Hook Now Corning? No, which one is it? Hook Canals Salmon Enhancement Group on that board currently?
I understand that we do, yes.
We do. I have to look, but I had a phone call from somebody who said that it was not disclosed on the application. I don't have that in front of me. Was it disclosed that this is also a a member of that board? And is this person a member of that board?
No, I did not see that on his application.
And I think we need to double check that. If that is the case, that may be an issue. Maybe you have the Commissioners don't see an issue there. But I I just want to make sure that we. You know, at the citizens' request that there that it is at least acknowledged. Before we select somebody that we have two people from the same organization.
Do you mean Hook Now Improvement Club?
No, no, Hook Canals Salmon Enhancement Group. Pacific Northwest Salmon Center, Hook Canals Salmon Enhancement Group. A great group. I'm I'm a huge supporter. I just want to make sure that. We have everything out in the open before we make a decision. If that is the case, I just received a phone call to bring that to my attention, that's all.
So then I can go back and clarify with the applicant and if he is, ask him to add that to his application.
I I would think so, yes. We can make our decisions based on that, but let us know who we also have on the on that board from the same group.
I can do that.
And then I think I don't know this person, so I think an interview would be. Great.
I will do that then. Any other questions for me?
Thanks, John.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, John. Yeah, Diane, talk about our Housing Authority Board applicant.
Morning. Yes, we have an application from Becky Kronklist for the Housing Authority. Board of Commissioners, and there is a vacancy on that board. So I wanted to know, do you want to interview Becky?
Yeah, I think so.
Works for me. Okay, that board isn't, do we have to, is it district or is it just whoever wants to be on there?
It's at large.
At large, okay.
I think they're all at large, yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay, we'll schedule an interview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Mary. Personnel policy updates.
Commissioners. Let me fix my webcam. So I apologize. I know you don't like to see the whole policy manual, but we did have grammar and a couple of other things to fix throughout. Including plain talk language, so it's getting shorter and shorter the more extra words we take out, but you have to look at the whole thing, so I apologize. Mainly, so I did want to cover was section four point five point one. Making sure that we include the county commissioner as the advising party to chair and presiding judge during emergency closures. Section four point eight, we needed to include some language around the auditor's office. We wanted to include in five point two point two lead pay as under the county administrator's authority. According to resolution twenty twenty two dash zero thirty three. Same for section five point two point three for out of class pay. For five point three point one, we needed to be a little bit clearer about eligible employees around longevity. And then section five point four reclassifications to include language from the request form that had specifically outlined. What are we classes for and what are we classes not for? And then positions in open negotiations and then providing a sixty day window for response. Since I'm only human and thirty days is a little bit of a time crunch for me sometimes. And then section seven point two point three, the lever cruel was language was really confusing as it pertains to RCW forty three six two ten. So we just wanted to clarify a little bit around that. So looking for approval of the resolution and including those proposed changes.
Madam Chair, can you let the record reflect that Mary is human?
I don't believe it, though. I think.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the changes.
I'm supportive of the superhuman thing.
I support the changes and the superhuman thing.
Okay, I'll do both.
Okay, thank you. And I'm kind of taking up most of the agenda, so. My next item, I believe, was the reclass of Stephen Thur. I'm following along correctly here. Yep, so we had a reclass request come in from public health around accounting technician to a senior accounting technician. I did conduct an analysis and review of the existing and requested position descriptions. Did a desk audit, implemented our new standardized process so that we're doing it consistently around the county. The new recommended range and step is in compliance with the current Chief Strick General Services CBA. Budget impact for twenty three would be four thousand five hundred eighty five dollars and then projected future budget impact seven thousand two hundred and five dollars. And this would be every classification to a step one and then attached to the findings and the budget impact.
I'm supportive.
I am as well.
The next item was, I just wanted to brief on the employee engagement survey that we conducted at the end of twenty twenty two. The questions, the actual poll came from a Gallup Employee Engagement Poll. We used it on a Likert scale. So the survey ran from November sixteen twenty two to December thirty one twenty two and we received a tour of a hundred and forty two responses. Right around thirty percent of our employee population. I won't go through in detail all of the results. They're in your packet, but I did want to point out that approximately seventy three percent of our employees indicated that they agree. Or strongly agree to being overall satisfied with their job, which I thought was. A huge great number and is indicative of the environment that we're creating here in Mason County and and how great things are going as they. We continue to improve moving forward. No action requested.
Informational. It's great information.
So Mary, can you talk a little bit about? Some of the consistent. Wishes, I guess I would call them, or. The so so we had some consistent feedback from some of our employees in areas where they'd like to see improvement.
Well, I think we, you know, we've seen that that pay is a big one, but relating specifically to the survey. I mean, I was actually pretty surprised. The only thing that I would see that really kind of stood out to me as even remotely needing attention was. Engaged feedback from management to their employees. I think that's really important in an area we could probably improve upon. I mean, everybody seems to have what they need to do their work. They believe in their work. But I think that, you know, having received feedback in the last seven days and then having a performance evaluation, those weren't as high. And so I think those would be really great reminders for management and how they're managing performance in their areas and their departments and divisions. It does include, gotta talk to people, gotta spend time coaching, counseling, developing. That is worthwhile investment.
The the and the other item that I thought is in that same line, Mary, was was interaction with the board. So I think that some of our employees would like to have an opportunity to interact with our Commissioners. And Mary held her first town hall meeting with Commissioner Shutey last week, so. We have a plan to continue to move forward on those alternating between the Commissioners, so. The Randy and Sharon, you guys get to choose who gets to goes and who's gets to go next, but Mary, do you kind of have a timeline as to when you? Like to schedule that?
Definitely want to do them quarterly, so maybe May or early June would be maybe a good time before vacations get heavy.
I think the chair should go next, personally. One of the one of the only ones I seen an issue with was, you know, as anybody said in the last seven days. That you've done good. I don't think that's realistic anyway, because the truth matters. You may not have done anything worth a damn seven days, but maybe in the last month or. Or something like that for a future question. To receive, you know, recommend or recognition for your work.
Well, I'm hoping I I like your point. I'm I'm hoping, though, that people are saying. Thank you or hey, nice job today. Or I hope something being said. It doesn't have to necessarily be like a sit down talk to, but I'm hoping people are getting something. Weekly would be best case scenario and if I had a matter of one, but I don't, so. I'm only human.
Twice today.
How it like it is.
So is there any thought on on maybe providing? Management classes or, you know.
There you go, Commissioner.
Yeah, there there are courses even online that. Because I I know I I'm only human too and being a good manager, good employer. Is one of my goals. And so to have a help with that, I know, Mary, you've you've sent out some articles and things like that. And those are those are awesome to review, but maybe we could share more with all of our other department heads and other electeds.
I completely agree. Actually, I hope we can empower you to go further than what you just said and actually. The commission get behind you to structure to maybe a quarterly or or at least twice a year, an actual day of training for. Leadership. I think it's a great idea. I'm so glad you said that, Commissioner Tress.
Thank you. Loretta's got her hand up.
Mary's Mary's actually already done that, so.
That's exactly.
You left us out?
Yeah, I I've. Been very appreciative of the the courses and classes, whether they be online or in person. That Mary and her team have forwarded to us on a regular basis. So, yeah, good work.
So she'll do her thumbs up also, so.
Yep, I just have to give a shout out to Mary. My life has improved since she got here and. She continues to be on my list for further uh further improvement, but I have attended a couple of her classes and they're excellent, so. We are lucky to have her.
So no, was that within seven days?
We do have other opportunities coming up, so this spring, I think it's in May, we are gonna host an onsite supervisor boot camp. At the Risk Pool and the pool are putting together. And then also the sheriff's office has. I think put out a couple of times about letting leadership in the county attend their their gold leadership training, a week ones coming up in a couple of weeks. It's two week, I mean, it's very intensive. I've I've instructed with with the sheriff and the undersheriff before. It's two weeks. It's it's an eighty hour class. But it's well worth the time and the investment in professional development. So if you have an opportunity to attend, they would highly recommend it.
And they they've opened it up outside of law enforcement. So Jennifer Byerly is actually attending the the gold training coming up here.
That's awesome.
It felt like there was somebody else, but I can't remember off the top of my head. So I think they had two 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 open, two openings. And and I think we were able to fill both of them, but.
So, Mark, you're saying that you're only human too and you. Kind of forgot who the other person was?
Oh, no. Let's not test Mark's memory, especially with names.
And it's a Monday.
Okay, any other questions on the engagement survey?
No, great job.
Thank you. The next one is the kind of second briefing around the nonrepresented class and comp study. And what I wanted to do was just reiterate the data that I had brought before. Demonstrate an illustration around twenty twenty three data from our comp counties to kind of show how. You know, taking action is gonna be important at some point as we continue to potentially fall further and further behind. And like, you know, this is just a briefing, but there are there are a couple of things I would like to move forward with immediately if the board is approving of that, so. Again, our budget impact was around three hundred fifty thousand ish. Before I come back to the requested action, what I wanted to do was explain the attachments. So. The twenty twenty two data, I'll study updates sheet. That is the original one I briefed on January thirtieth. The twenty twenty-two data, I'll study updates sheet. That is the original one I briefed on January thirtieth.
Mary, are you are you able to share your screen and and kind of walk them through that together?
Thank you.
Yep, perfect.
Okay, so this is the all study updates. This is the one that would. Have changes between steps nine and ten um to two and a half percent. Right now, they're not. Um, we would need the addition of steps forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight in order to put the comps where they would need to be. This was the uh what it would take to get to market, and that is a classic comp strategy. For us, it's the mid, not the minimum, but it's a get to market strategy where these would be initial implementation. And the list just might continue here, and then the cost of the range realignment for two and a half percent between steps nine and ten, and then um. Plus all of the stuff that's above all the realignments, and then below was the cost of range realignment. But steps nine and ten as they are without the two and a half percent between the steps. The next sheet was just, this is just a demonstration of the twenty twenty-three data and what it would take to get to market, so we'd need a new forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight and forty-nine, actually. Um, this is kind of what it's starting to look like if we um. Don't take action relatively quickly as the twenty twenty-three calls are implemented in our counties. And it's been time costing on that since it's just an illustration at this point. And then it had been brought forward that there was maybe a um. Uh, request for an alternative of instead of just a get to mid-market strategy at this time, what would it look like to do an iteration? So maybe addressing. Seven and a half percent below and under the market now. And then the ones that are requiring a larger increase, say ten fifteen percent, twelve and a half percent would get. Half now and then half in the twenty twenty-four budget cycle. So this is just an example of what a twenty-three to twenty-four iteration of the twenty twenty-two data. Being implemented could potentially look like if the commissioners would prefer that route.
So I'd like to just add a little bit to that um in terms of context, so. Uh, I I think that uh Mary and her team are doing an amazing job of um. Interacting with with each one of our bargaining um units that are we're currently negotiating with. Um. This is a an approach that is very similar to how we've handled it in those, so creating an environment here in Mason County where we. Uh, look at individual positions, identify where they may be falling beneath the market. Um, and then the implementation strategy um that that we've taken in the past from what I'm aware of, uh and what we're currently moving forward with. Is that we try and break it up into a period, so it's not just like we don't try and address everything all at once. Um, this would give us the opportunity to uh make an adjustment in twenty twenty-three and then uh schedule that next adjustment to cover the rest of it in twenty twenty-four.
One of my opinions is uh as we're looking at compensation strategy and implementation strategies like we do with our contracts has been pointed out. Uh, this should be maybe a consideration that uh I like the idea of staggering it, first of all, but uh second of all, I also think it'd be important that on every third year. Uh, just like we do with our contracts, we have another uh. Reevaluation of the compensation strategies. That's how we do our contracts with most of our, we do three and four years, but for ourselves, being the nonrepresented, we could put it in there to. To relook at it and do a new study on the third year.
Um, absolutely, Commissioner Netherland. It's a the the this is a a process that has taken quite a bit of research. Um, you know, that Mary's gone over in detail the process that we went through to uh look at the individual positions and. Compare them with our comparable counties uh to ensure that we're comparing apples to apples. So each one of those positions that you see in front of you on your packet materials. Um, where we have market adjustments that are recommended, they had at least three comparisons, the the job duties within each one of those um individual position titles. It it was a match at least seventy percent, if not more. Um, so that's sometimes difficult in a small county like Mason County, because we often. Place additional responsibilities, because we don't have the, we don't have the breadth of staff available to really segregate everything out and have specialties, so we tend to. We tend to take some of that and and load it on to uh one position. So it's nice to be able to do this process. I think that Mary and her team have uh the data now documented. Uh, and it is easily updated and uh intract so that every third year. Uh, we can go back and do this just to ensure that we're not falling further behind.
Actually have to have four comps to have a benchmark position.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Just so it's not a one-off for people out there in the public, uh, we got quite a few comments on some of the things we've done recently, like the the nursing, even though that was contracts and not. The other, uh, we have been trying as a commission to do this with our representative as well. We have been uh. Uh, implementing within the contracts, uh different realignments as we've been finding them, so we're not doing anything different than we do for everybody else. Uh, just for our people, this is consistent with what we've been doing, and again, that's why I would uh recommend the staggered. Uh, rollout of it with a an end of every third year is a re. Recontemplation of where we're at. Within the nonrepresented framework. As an actual task we brought to us for our third year uh budget.
Right, Commissioner Shutey?
Yeah, so uh right off the top, just really appreciate the work that has gone into this. Um, I think there's um. It just takes a ton of effort and a lot of a lot of detail goes into it, and so just really grateful for that, first and foremost. You know, I I I I kind of see it both ways. I mean, my my preference is to sort of bite the bullet um and get everybody. You know, up to par based on the data that we have um out of the gate, but I certainly also see. Um, you know, there being some benefit to to doing this in a in a strategic way, um, you know, but in a way I think that outlines. To our nonrepresented folks, what exactly they can expect from us. Um, what's the commitment from the commission? Um, to to actually acting on the data that we've received, and I. You know, listening to Commissioner Netherland kind of walk through some of his thoughts, um, you know, one of the things that, one of the things that we really want to do is we want to try to approach this with some parity between our representative and nonrepresented workforces. Um, and. I I would just say that in the contracts that we've ratified to this point, we've made those market adjustments upfront. And then and then apply it across the board increases, and so. I do think there is some precedence for us to to act on this. Um, imme- you know, immediately, at least. Immediate in county government terms. Um, you know, and and actually make those investments upfront and then apply across the qua- apply. Our other wage increases moving forward, but I think the key point that Commissioner Netherland made, the one thing that we should all walk away from this with is. Um, we should not wait. Decades before doing this again. Um, and I think that's part of the, that's part of the heartburn in terms of. Um, deciding how we want to implement what we've what we've gotten out of this this study is that. Uh, whereas we have been doing this regularly with represented. Uh, you know, bargaining units, we have not been doing this. Regularly at all with our nonrepresented staff, and so, you know, uh, we we don't want this to be a situation where they're sort of. Um, you know, again penalized for, you know, uh. Our inability to do this on a consistent basis, and so we don't, we don't want to continue that trend, I guess, is what I'm saying, and so. Um, those are some of my initial thoughts. I guess I'm just curious, I kind of hear from Commissioner Trask as well. I don't want to get too far out in front of the commission on this, but. I think there is, I think there is some. Precedent for us making the the market database adjustments uh based on how we've treated. Bargaining units that we've already ratified uh here in the past several months.
Yeah, thank you for that. I I would. I really support just biting the bullet and and getting it done. I think that um. Our nonrepresented staff has gone years without. Being recognized. And and being able to. To show them how much we appreciate them, how much, how important they are to the county. Every one of our employees is so important. And being able to show them that how much we appreciate them and how important they are is is uh. Very high on my priority list. And. What this does is this, this shows what we get it done. And then every, I love the idea of every three years, making sure that that is looked at. Um. Being a being a good employer. We saw that from the from this um, the surveys. On the employee engagement survey, being a good employer is very important. And being able to retain our staff and to plan, you know, for succession. I think that tho- these are all steps that that we're. Working toward. And that we're accomplishing, so I'm excited, super excited about this. But I guess if I were. If it was. Up to me, I would say just bite the bullet and let's get it done.
Well, thank you all for the feedback. Um, I I think that it is true and and that if we do this consistently on a three-year basis, then you don't see these. These super large fluctuations, right? And and um when you look at it from from this perspective. Uh, especially where I see some of the large disparity exists, um, you realize that that those individuals, it's not something that you can look at just from a year perspective. Um, those individuals have been under um compensated for many, many years. Um, so you know, some individuals may look at this and say, oh, wow, that's a big increase, but realize that those increases um are long, long due. Right? So those individuals were actually um. Not making market for the work that they're performing uh for decades. So, yes, I I'm I'm excited about moving forward with this. I'm excited about the commissioner's support for the strategies. Uh, that Mary and her team have have implemented and and not only the nonrepresented, but also the represented. Um, I think that when you look at those contracts, like both Commissioner Netherland and Commissioner Shutey mentioned, that we have settled. Um, you would see that we actually did do that, right? And we um from a from a retention standpoint. Uh, I think that we've taken the approach on on certain positions where. We've recognized that uh maybe maybe we're good on the low in the mid, but on the top side, we're a little short, and so. Kind of planning out. Planned increases or additional steps within those positions that will bring them up to that full range market, right? So we've got. I'm 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 compensating uh and able to attract people at the lower level positions, and then I'm able to retain them uh because I'm I'm compensating them fairly. Uh, on our market, which is our comparable counties uh at the top end also.
So the only requested action I had put on the briefing was to approve the resolution for the two and a half percent between steps nine and ten, and then the retitling pieces. But I can, of course, alter if there's different direction from the commissioners at this point.
And one other thing I'd like to to clarify with the board. Um, so. Obviously, this has taken us a little time to put this together and do all this analysis. Um, so when we did it, we were looking at twenty twenty-two. Um, and Mary has presented information with twenty twenty-three also, so um. The I I'd like to to hear back from the board on which approach. Under the realignment title changes and get to market section, the board would like to move forward on. Because they are different.
So I'm taking a a quick relook at at that.
So it was important for me to be consistent with the information that we brought from you forward to you previously. Uh, and in our previous. Information that we presented to the board, it was twenty twenty-two data. Um, in the meantime, Mary was able to to kind of like take a look at twenty twenty-three, because I think that. Uh, I think one of the more important points that we wanted to to bring to the board was that if we didn't do anything. Then we're going to continually fall further and further behind. Um, so that that's what the intent was, but then when you see the the differences, there are. Um, some that, you know, I'd hate to implement, wait another three years and then find ourselves in a position um where we would have to make. Sizable adjustments, um, but. Definitely up to you all.
As as for me, I'd like to, I I would prefer to go with the twenty twenty-three. Because that brings us current. Commissioners?
So I'm looking through the the documents here again, and so that's the second. Is that the second set?
Correct, the twenty twenty-three data get to market, that would be. The current. But that's just that'd be the get to market. That would not be an iterative process, um, which I could break out if that would be easier for the commissioners to look at.
And then, so. Has that, so I guess the only question that I have then, what's the what's the costing out difference between? The get to market versus the twenty-three and twenty-four?
And and that I that I have not been able to to get calculated yet, so.
Okay.
Definitely could, definitely could do that.
Yeah, so the twenty twenty-two would be that three hundred fifty thousand approximate cost that we had talked about before.
Okay. I'd like to see some, I'd like to see that data. I mean, is that, what would it take to get that? Cost out?
Just my other non-human employee calculating it. Jen?
Okay. Um.
And she's actually out of the office today and tomorrow, I think, so she'll be back on Wednesday, but. She's usually pretty quick on getting that stuff done.
Is there, is just taking a temperature check here on the commission. Is is there consensus or agreement on the recommended action that Mary put forward on on the briefing document itself?
As far as the 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 resolution?
Yeah, so the the incre- the um step nine and ten. And then the retitling.
What was Rob Ford on on just the basic uh? Uh, paperwork I have in front of me, I'm supportive of.
Okay.
For the re- the request uh that I have before me on her sheet.
The recommended exaction.
Okay. And Mary, would you be hoping that the commission would take action on that tomorrow?
Possible.
Okay.
And the the costing for that, um, the step adjustment was. The cost of range, so steps nine and ten.
So that's the seventy-four thousand?
Yes, that would be, yeah, the seventy-four, seventy-three, nine, seventy. Two and a half percent adjustment right now.
Okay, and then um. That would then come off of the three hundred fifty thousand total.
Oh, money twenty-two data, yes.
Okay. And then so the difference between the two is then where we'd be working up from. For the twenty-three and twenty-four, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I so I guess that's, I guess that's my position, so I'd like to move forward with the recommended action that Mary has today. And then I'd like to put a little bit more. Um, sort of costing out for the twenty-three and twenty-four, and then when I have that number, then I'm comfortable taking action on the rest.
So we would take action on the. Action tomorrow on your recommended. And then you would brief us maybe the following week on, well, depending on how how quick our non-humans or superhumans. Can get us the numbers. Yeah. I'm comfortable with that, Commissioner Netherland.
I'm comfortable moving forward with this one. As for the other information, I think it's important, I still think that uh. When we put this together, it shouldn't be a one-off. It should be a compensation strategy uh with a strategy being over several years, and that's why you have the two thousand twenty-two that we've already looked at, like we have for other contracts. Where we've not been taking in twenty twenty-three, but that's something that should come into the second phase of the the next uh uh year of a compensation strategy with the third year being. A complete re- relook, but that's, as for this particular one, let's put it on and get it on there.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So just to reiterate, to make sure that we're all on the same page, I want to make sure that we are meeting. So just to reiterate, to make sure that we're all on the same page, I want to make sure that we are meeting the wishes of the consensus of the board. Um Mary can move forward with the uh creation of steps nine and ten. And the additional salary ranges of forty six, forty seven and forty eight. Um as far as getting to market, Mary, I'm I'm sorry, would you like to add forty nine into that also?
So the only requested action that I had was the two and a half percent between steps nine and ten and then the retitling. Adding the additional ranges, I think we might want to wait in case there are changes based on the commissioners. Wanting to take action later, whether it's twenty two or twenty three data.
Okay. So commissioners, does that sound good? So it's in for in terms of bringing these positions to market, that's not going to happen tomorrow.
Right, I mean, I think that's what I, I think that's what we all said was, we're going to go with what Mary has outlined. On the requested action today. And then cost out the twenty three and twenty four parts of it.
Yep.
Come back for another briefing and then we'll go from there.
All right, and that also includes the retitling, right?
The the next step would, yes.
The next step would or this step to?
Yes, tomorrow's two and a half percent and retitling.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
All right, thank you.
Um so the next one I have is a flex spending account through Navia Benefit Solutions, so. Part of our strategic plan, and I've actually heard a lot of anecdotal demand around this um. It was around an FSA or a flex spending account. So we've done some research. Um I really think that this would increase our competitiveness in the market, um not only for recruitment, but also for retention, it's additional benefit for employees. Um it's an opportunity for employees to defer pre-tax dollars to. For healthcare or daycare related costs. Um the cost and the the formula for. What this is depends on employee participation. And so. What I'd like to do is administer a survey or a poll to county employees to kind of gauge interest in an FSA program. Um and that way I could actually come to the board with a potential budget impact, which I don't necessarily have right now. We have a couple theoretical. Math problems we've done, but it really kind of depends on how many employees show interest, and then I can have a realistic. Approximation for you.
If we change our dynamics, also need to make sure that you get into our equations. Uh how the pricing may be affected if it's a large amount that move uh uh between our other. Health contracts. Rather uh healthcare insurance. Cause there's no budget impact, that's fine, but if we move quite a few, will it have an impact on what we're paying? Through group health, for example, what we call now Kaiser permanent tamold.
So Commissioner Netherland, this this flexible spending account, I I don't think would impact individuals. Um participation in any insurance programs. What this does is it allows the employee um to. To to take money out of their check pre-tax, so before we tax, so the county actually saves. On the amount that we have to pay in federal income tax for our individual employees. And the employee saves in the sense that they don't, they're not taxed on those dollars first. And then try and recoup them through their tax return for some of these expenses. Medical expenses, the 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 limitations on those in terms of of taxes. It's like seven and a half percent, so you have to, you have to incur quite a bit of medical. Before you're actually getting a quote-unquote tax benefit associated with it. This would allow those individuals to actually. Withhold that pre-tax, utilize it during that year um and and get the benefit of it, so both medical and. Um daycare related expenses.
The daycare I have to look into, but the medical aspect, uh if are we gonna actually set up our own HSA? On top of it to handle uh um uh maximum amount of pockets and deductibles, cause other than that, the HSA usually goes to an insurance company.
So this this is an FSA.
An FSA, right, so you can, it's basically just another deduction. Pre-tax dollars for the employee and they can choose how they are going to use it and there are, you know, you can only use it for certain things, but you. The beauty of an FSA virtues versus an HRA or an HSA is they can use it for daycare dollars. Um which is huge, I know we've heard daycares.
Yes.
An issue.
Yeah.
And so uh it's literally just another deduction and it's the employee's money, it's pre-tax, and then they can use it for the. Allowable costs that they're incurring. Like a separate, you know, debit account for that specific stuff.
And will there be a cost for us maintaining uh the auditor's office and all them are on good with her?
We haven't met with the auditor yet, but we will. Um I just wanted to see if it's even worth exploring at this point. Um because there has to be a certain number of employees interested for us to be. It it's be, you know, a benefit for the employee and the county.
I think there's enough there to to get a little bit more information. Um I. I don't think more information is going to necessarily hurt us, and if it's a benefit to the employees that. With, you know, kind of a a low administrative burden, then I think, you know, there's. There's some value to it, so I'd be interested in seeing what the interest is.
Yeah, so would I.
Yes. Great, so so Mary, Mary will go and and kind of poll our employees in the counties, who would be interested in a flexible spending account. Um and then once we get that information, then we're able to actually put some numbers together, right? Cause there's limitations on how much you can put in there. Uh the majority of the administration goes through Navia. Um so it's the interaction between the employee and Navia to get reimbursed for those dollars that they've pulled out of.
Yes.
Um the the potential cost is, um we just got to make sure that there's enough in there, uh so that when they do withdraw. Um that there's that there's dollars there to withdraw on. But yeah, we can bring all of those details to you later, but once we have the number of employees that are interested in the FSA program. Uh I think Mary will be able to bring back additional details in terms of what does that cost look like, what does that process look like? Uh and I and I think that from a a total compensation package, which is is something that Mary's been. Really pushing to say, here's additional benefits that we can offer as an employer uh in Mason County. And that may help attract individuals to 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 come to Mason County and or stay here.
Hey, one thing, just to make note, under the common challenges, FS FSA is tightly coupled to one health plan. Doesn't work well with other plans or for retail purchases, so just know that going in. That's what I was talking about earlier, so. But I I more information is always good, but just we have to be aware of that.
Oh, I I think when I talked to the rep, they said these were the common challenges that um. Can, you know, potentially come up, but they're not seeing them very prevalent in their customers and they have, you know. Have said, I I just came from Pierce County, uses them, I think a lot of places do, so they definitely are reputable, but we will for sure keep an eye on those things. Okay, I will work on a poll, thank you. Um the next one that I have is a. Uh addition of lead paid article ten of other compensation for the twenty two, twenty four. Teamsters Appraisers Unit Collective Bargaining Agreement. Um the agreement does not provide for lead workers, so we'd like to. Uh go ahead and get that put in there and attached is the MOU already signed by the union, they are on board with it.
Sounds good.
Yep, same, yep.
And then we also have another MOU with correction, there was a scrivener's error. And it's in the wage table of the twenty two, twenty four contract. Um and it's in, uh let's see, missing were step six and seven for the evidence type classification. Um and then there was not supposed to be a step six and seven in the accountant classification, so this is just a. MOU to address that scrivener's error moving forward and. Attached there is what it should look like. And we'll have a signed copy from them shortly.
Sounds good.
Good with me.
Yep.
Okay, and then I also have a same thing for the lead worker by adding it to um the twenty one, twenty three woodworkers. Uh for the Office of Public Defense Collective Bargaining Agreement, same thing, there is no provision for lead worker at this time, and we would like to add one. Um attached to the sign MOU from.
Good with me.
Okay, that will conclude the Mary show, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Might have to go get a drink of water after all that talking. So the next item uh that I have for you is a is a recommended change to our advanced travel policy. Um so currently here in Mason County, uh we do not authorize or allow advanced travel funds to be. Um requested by employees. Makes sense because the majority of the training uh and the majority of the travel that our employees are doing uh is fairly minimal. And so it's a, so our 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 travel policy is very specific, current travel policy is very specific in terms of. Um the amounts that you're eligible for, the process for getting reimbursed for actual costs. Um and and the it that doesn't really place a burden on our staff. Because it's, it can be reimbursed in a fairly timely manner. So coming up here, our our sheriff's office is actually sending a couple of employees to a fairly intensive training, and I think it's in Pennsylvania. And so the individuals are going to be attending a fourteen week training. Uh this training is six days a week. Uh and it is fairly long days. Um so the employees are going to be away from home for this entire period of time, which makes it difficult to do a reimbursement. Um because they'd have to submit forms and then uh physically, we 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 we. Write checks for this, and so the employees would have to physically receive the check and deposit it into their account. So what we're asking for is in these situations where individuals are traveling for an extended period of time. Um that we would allow advanced travel. Uh the calculation of the advanced travel is in line with. Um so how much we would give them is in line with our current policies in terms of how we determine what you're eligible for. So it's based on uh whether you're traveling on that day, where you're, where the location that you're going to. Um what that location is and the. GSA at the at the federal level um has a map that shows, here's the, here's the amounts that we allow for meals for all of these individual locations. Um so these individuals would be able to uh calculate the amount that they would be eligible for. Uh for travel reimbursement, and this is just for meals. And then we could provide those individuals with a check upfront um that would give them the funds uh to fund that fourteen week class period. And I have Leo on here too, thank you Leo for attending, dude, would you like to add anything to what I presented?
Um no, but I just wanted to thank Mark uh for preparing that and uh it seemed reasonable to me.
One of the things that I would like to mention that I forgot, I thought Leo Leo was going to catch me on it. Um is that in our current policy, you're you're reimbursed for actual expenses, and so you actually. Have to submit a receipt showing this is what I purchased, um and this is what I'm asking reimbursed for. In this scenario, we would not require them to turn in receipts, so they're gone for fourteen days. Uh most likely, I would imagine when you're going to class six days a week. Um that that they're probably going to be going to the grocery store and buying a lot of peanut butter and jelly sandwiches or, you know. Materials to actually cook their own meals. Um and so the the burden of actually trying to reconcile all of that. Not only for Leo's staff, but also for those employees that are in that travel status. Um I I don't believe that the that the benefit um outweighs the 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 labor. So in this policy, those individuals would not be required uh to turn in receipts and reconcile the advanced travel when they return.
Commissioners, any questions?
No, uh seems like a well put together, well thought out policy and appreciate Leo your support on it and. Come forward.
Same, my deal was during the audit committee, so I'm definitely supportive and appreciate all the work.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner Netherland, we did discuss this in detail at the Audit Committee. Had a great discussion around it, so thank you. So we will move that move this forward um to the action item agenda for. Is it tomorrow? Mackenzie? Think that we're coming up on when they're going to be leaving here pretty soon, so I'd like to get this in place. So if we can get it on tomorrow's agenda, that would be great.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, so the next item I have for you is, uh you know, obviously we are in legislative session, and so with legislative session. Uh comes a lot of requests where individuals are saying, hey, would you support us? And would you write a letter of support for us? Um in in going after um. Going after money. So one of the things that that Mason County submitted to the ledge. Uh was a request for some financial support in moving forward on. Um really the design and the siding of a new jail facility for Mason County. So we have our own individual request for this, uh and then. The Washington State Association of Counties is actually asking the legislature for some funds. To analyze this on a statewide level. Um so there's many, especially smaller counties um that are struggling with. Uh having modernized jail facilities. Uh and it's it's something that's been brought up, I think some of our lot larger counties have the resources that they've dedicated to that, and so they may not have the. Extensive need as smaller counties do, and so I'm asking the board uh to sign a letter of support. Uh for this holistic jail study and analysis and the establishment of a jail modernization task force.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely support it, and then um I would also just uh copy our legislative delegation on there, I know. Um this is this is targeting Senate uh ways and means uh members, um but it could be good to let our legislators know as well.
Absolutely.
Agree with that a hundred percent.
So the, so one of the things that I I'm going to mention here, and I've been talking with Diane's or a little bit, is is we're going to have some modifications to. Um the specific authorities that you give the county administrator uh as the commission. And in certain scenarios like this, where we're where individuals are asking for support, um. I can talk with individual commissioners to to kind of get an initial. Feedback on whether you would be supportive or not, and I think in the future for certain types of requests. Uh that if if I if I get consensus from the board and there's a time limit associated with it. Um then if the board would be willing, I could actually sign. Um as the county administrator of Mason County, and then I would actually bring that to uh the next briefing that where we have the board. And in some instances like this, where we're actually doing a request to the legislature. I think it's important to have the elected official signature on there, so um maybe follow up with with specific support letters. Uh with the commission's signature on it, but just kind of giving you a heads up that we're going to be bringing that forward um so that we can get. Quick turnaround time sometimes on some of these where we may miss deadlines if if we don't get a letter of support in where we wanted to.
Sounds good.
Do any of the commissioners have any concerns about that process?
I don't have any particular concerns.
Nope.
Thank you. Alrighty, so now you get the Mark show on the financial report. So I actually went over this with Jen, she actually created it before she left, so hopefully I will do it justice. So this is the last item on there, and the first thing that we're looking at is the twenty twenty two versus twenty twenty three current expense revenue comparison. Um and when we look at that, the revenue collected through the end of January, uh two point eight million. Uh the amount.
Show your screen. Jen always does, I'm just saying.
Wow, Jen's so much better at this than I. Let me, let me try this.
Make sure it's at the right screen.
Yeah, no kidding. Okay, can you see it?
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, yeah. So then, so uh the revenue collected in twenty twenty three um through the end of January. In the current expense or general fund, two point eight million. Um, and then the, in twenty twenty-two, at the same period of time, we had collected, uh, about two million dollars. Um, so everything looks like it's going fairly well. I think that the areas where we're seeing revenue this year that we didn't see last year was, um, I'd highlight the non-departmental, so the seven hundred and fifty-six thousand here. Uh, of that, there was four hundred thousand that we received in that LATCF funding. Moving on to the next item is the individual treasure department receipt. So this is to break down of the revenue that's received by the treasurer. Um, the, the highlight here is the, um, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars that we received in local retail sales and use tax. Uh, as you compare it to last year, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And when you look at it in total for the year, so far year to date in twenty twenty-three, we've collected one point four million through the treasurer's office and last year is about one point one. So now we move on to the expenditure comparison. And when we look at this one, we're seeing expenditures through the end of January in the general fund, three point nine million. Um, last year, we're at about three point two million. It's a little bit more than last year, uh, but as you see here, we're eight percent, um, of our total budget spent, which is one twelfth. So we're on track. You do see individual percentages that are a little bit higher. And that's because some of the expenditures aren't always cyclical. They don't break up into one twelfth very easily. So we have to pay, um, I think that one of the items was the treasurer's office has to play, pay for their application that they utilize in January for maintenance and support. So that would be an example of where you'd see that dollar value or that percentage be higher than the eight percent. So looking at specific revenue streams. This is something that Jen and I may be revising in the future. It's weird that we have some graphs for some, uh, but not for others. But, uh, as you go through that and you look at it, um, the thing that jumped out to us that was a little bit weird was this negative number here in the road diversion property tax. That's because of some of the reversals that need to be done at the beginning of the year, just to ensure that the expenditures associated with road diversion are, are put in the correct year. So there were some that had to be moved back. But as you can see from twenty twenty, January twenty twenty-three, looks like we're on track. Glad to see that our retail sales and use taxes healthy still. Next item here is just our monthly financial report that kind of shows this is what we've collected um, in January. And if you were to extrapolate that, um, through the end of the year, at that same level, uh, we would collect about nine point four million, um, as opposed to what we have budgeted at eight point four million. Please stop me if you have any questions or I'll just continue to roll through it. Next item is our six-year financial recap. Uh, and so in this one, you can see that our general fund operating reserves, uh, this is how they're broken out. So we have about ten point one million in operating reserves. Um, this is a new capital reserve that we created in twenty twenty-two of five million. And total twenty-five point six million general fund. Now moving on to all the other funds. So these are our special fund cash balances, um, and please ask if you have any questions about anything here. Um, this is, this is a new fund here, the Mason County Clean Water District. So that's something that stood out to us as kind of wanting to, to highlight to you. Um, we're paying attention to cash balances in some of our utilities. Russell Wood is, is one that we pay close attention to, uh, because they tend to get low on cash. Um, luckily, we, um, have some support that we provide out of real estate excise tax two, to help pay for debt in Russell Wood, and we can supplement the cash balance with some of those. This is, uh, motor pool expenditures. Um, so you can see here that expenditures through the end of the month is about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, when you look at the total budget, um, you know, one point five versus one point seven for twenty twenty-three. Appears that we're on track for twenty twenty-three, a little bit under, but we do have some vehicles that we've ordered, um, that are super hard to get. So some of our uh, police, um, or our sheriff's department, um, pursuit vehicles have been very difficult to get, but I think that we've got some lockdown. So, um, you'll, you'll see, be seeing that reflected in future reports. This is our twenty twenty-two versus twenty twenty-three special and other funds revenue comparison. Um, so revenue collected through the end of January is about three point four million, uh, when you looked at it compared to twenty twenty-two, two point nine million. So we are doing well there. And the expenditure side. So expenditures through the end of January in the special revenue funds, uh, four point one million in twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-two, we had spent five million at this time. And I believe that's it. So do you have any questions for me?
Actually have a comment for all of us to, to pay attention to, uh, on the real estate excise tax back in two thousand and nineteen, the end of two thousand and nineteen, uh, because this is usually a couple of months behind. If I remember correctly, that was a horrible, horrible year for rain and flooding and stuff. So that was a one-off. But, uh, we are at fifty-four percent for our real estate excise tax where we normally had been, and we don't have the rain events or anything. But even more important than that, uh, this should be higher because we've changed the way we do it. We have, uh, collect more money uh, in comparison, used to be one point seven eight. Now it's flexible according to how much a property sells for. And we have home seller for a lot more money. So that number should be very high. The idea that we're coming in at fif- at fifty-four percent is something to be worried about or look at. It hopefully it's one off for one month, but this is also when, what it looks like when things start to go bad. This is the first place that you see it. So hopefully next month that will come up and it'll just be a warning that I'm giving you with, uh, based on just fluff. Uh, if not, and it comes back low again next month, we need to start paying attention to, look at what, what we need to do to offset some, some revenue shortfalls. We have a lot that we count on with REIT, but I, this is usually the precursor for other things as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Netherland. And that's exactly what Jen and I were talking about when we started to see some of those numbers there. So hoping that it's just a time of year, um, issue, but, uh, definitely you can see a, a significant decrease compared to what we've received in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. And hopefully you can see that on the screen here down the bottom of, uh, the six-year special revenue streams comparison. So in twenty twenty-three, end of January, sixty thousand versus you know, hundred and, hundred and ten, hundred thirteen and twenty-one and twenty-two respectively.
Does REIT lag behind in reporting like our sales tax?
It does.
Well, so this is reflective of the same two month or, uh, period.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned, uh, the, the, the end of December nineteen and, uh, I think the very beginning of January, but December was, I remember it being a fairly rough month.
Hmm.
Well, we'll see. Just pay the, we'll just have to pay attention. If it comes in short again next, next month, uh, well, two starts to become a pattern, right? Three is a pattern, but two starts to be a pattern.
Yeah, absolutely. Something to continue to pay attention to. And, and one of the reasons why Jen puts these reports together for you guys on a monthly basis, right? So
Yeah.
Keeps you, keeps you apprised of what's going on.
So that's all, that's all I have for you.
Mark, do you wanna? Mark, did you want to do the?
Speaking all over the place here.
There was one thing on the agenda, the foreign trade zone.
There was. We received a request from the port of Bremerton.
Um, Angeles.
Yeah, Port Angeles, I remember.
Okay. So, um, is, are any of the commissioners aware of this? Or have you had a chance to look at the emails associated with it?
I have. I think I would rather wait until we have more information. I believe we were, you're going to receive more information from um, the EDC. And then, um, I think that there was some other, another person that was like taking a look at it too. Oh, there's Jennifer.
Yeah, you just, you ask and you shall receive.
And I appear, you say my name.
Magic. So, uh, yes, thank you for reminding me. And, and Jennifer, can you give us a little more information on this?
Sure. Um, I reached out to the port of Port Angeles. They are working through putting together an application to do a magnet site for their port. Um, what they'll end up pulling together is, it's called an alternative site framework, which allows them to designate a service area. I have checked with both the federal and our local governments. We can be under multiple FTZs. It doesn't stop us from, um, I, I believe it was Commissioner Shutey who said we are already under the port of Olympias, which we are. Um, all of Mason County is under their service area outside of the Olympic National Forest and Park. That's not designated for development. That's shocking. Um, so I've, I've talked with the port of Shelton, um, they have a representative that sits on the port of Olympias FTZ board. Um, one of their commissioners does it. They're not, um, I've also talked with the port of Port Angeles. They're not asking for anything from us. There really is no impact to the county. It just allows us potentially, if we have a site or a business, um, to be able to come on, um, and request a sub-zone authorization. Um, so you essentially, if we wanted to put together a federal trade zone for Mason County specifically, it's a lot more, um, work for us. This allows us to be able to have a business or a site request to have that designation added. That's kind of it in a nutshell. I'm happy to, if you guys have specific concerns, I'm happy to kind of drill down on what those might be. Um, if I don't have the answers, which is possible, I will definitely track them down.
So I, you know, I think my, my one, my main concern was the, you know, creating a conflict between where we're currently designated. And if this, you know, if this will, you know, change any of that. But we also had received some communications from um, Port of Greatview and Port of, of Allen with, with some concerns. And so I don't, I don't know if you got a chance to chat with anybody from those organizations in addition to the port of Shelton, but I, I don't know what their specific concerns are outside of perhaps the conflict that I mentioned, but um, if we can be in multiple FTZs, I, I guess it's really not that big of a deal. From my perspective, at least where the county is concerned, but I, I don't know where the other ports fall on it and how to factor that in.
I didn't, I didn't have a, I saw the communications. I didn't have a chance to reach out to it as well. Um, I'm happy to do that if you would like me to. Um, it, the subzones that, that we would be under, if the port of Port Allen's application is approved, um, we wouldn't become a magnet site. It would be a business or a port-specific uh, request to become or to have that designation added. So this is just essentially saying, we, we will cover this area. So I, I'm, I'm happy to reach out if you wanted to wait for that. But it doesn't have to be a port specific. It could be a business, um, or a businesses site that would have to do it to, to be the subzone that would be with this application.
Considering ports are a true economic driver and they're actually tasked with it for the county, I would definitely like to get buy-in from them before we, we jump in personally.
Yeah, I think I, I'd, I'd like to hold off and until you speak to the other ports as well. Um, more information is never bad.
Yeah. And I mean, if possible, I'd like to see that just done jointly with Mark so that, you know, that we're, we're all getting kind of just so he's included on it.
Oh, absolutely.
For sake of, uh, coming back to us next week.
Okay.
But yeah, I would just check with all the other, I mean, we have what, five ports in Mason County?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we got, we got Shelton. It sounds like we talked to them. So let's, you know, get the other four.
Okay, will do. I'll work with Mark on a schedule and get it set up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
I'm sitting here trying to think of all the other, I knew Grapeview, Allen.
Duwato, Grapeview, Allen. Allen, Duwato, Shelton.
And Tohuya.
Oh, no, Tohuya does not exist.
Oh.
Tohuya was closed down twenty years ago.
Then do we only have four?
No, Allen, Shelton.
Uh, Hootsport.
Great, Hootsport.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Netherland.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. I, I, I'll get together with Jen and we can, we can go talk to them. I will bring that back to you next week. So anything else on, we've had quite an agenda. I mean, what a full morning.
I have nothing, Commissioners. Do you have anything?
No.
Yeah, I had two things. Sorry. Uh, it, it's, it's more, it's more letters of support. So it's, it's obviously letter of support season. Um, as Mark kind of mentioned, and so, uh, I received two requests to pass on to the commission. Um, first, uh, from the youth connection, um, spoke to Terry Drexler last week. Uh, and they're, they're going out, um, and seeking some additional funding for the transitional housing project that we funded, uh, in part through ARPA. Um, and so they're looking for a little bit of additional federal funding, uh, to, to go into what they have already received. Um, and so I, I'm, I'm supportive of that project. I know we have been with our other funding. And so I wanted to bring that in front of the commission to see if we'd be willing to do a letter of support for tomorrow.
It's not in any conflict with anything else we're doing, right?
Well, I don't think well, that begs a bigger conversation about how we participate in the federal community projects, the earmarking requests, which we haven't, and we ought to in the future, but we don't have any projects that we're submitting for to my knowledge. So
Yeah. So at this point, I didn't think so. So at this point, we are, we're not in conflict. So I'm supportive of doing it, uh, tomorrow.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Okay. And then the second request that I got was from Community Lifeline, um, for the pallet shelter, uh, project that they're doing also. This is a community projects, uh, earmark request. Um, and, uh, the city of Shelton is doing one. And I believe this was a request that, uh, or an action item on the housing task force, Commissioner Trask. The mitigation site, the pallet.
Right, yes.
So.
I, I, I don't know. I I'd like to hold that for more study, more information.
And I don't, I don't know anything about it. So if, if we have a commissioner that wants to wait, I, you know me, I'm, I'll normally always stand behind, give them time to get the information they need, but I don't know this project at all.
And maybe we could invite Community Lifeline to come in and
Or is it a time sensitive issue?
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's all time sense. It's all tied to the, to the deadlines that, uh, um, I believe this is for Senator Murray, whose deadline is actually tomorrow. So
That's right.
I can, yeah, so.
Well, but before we say, before we pass on that, let me just ask you, is this something that you're supporting, uh, uh, Commissioner Shutey? And if so, you want to take the time to explain it to us a little more?
Uh, so, yeah. So I mean, I'm supportive in con- in the, of the concept of expanding our shelter services, um, as we've been working with Community Lifeline. I, I don't have a ton of additional detail on the project itself. Um, I think they're still working with the city to nail down some specifics. Um, but what they need help with would be, um, uh, would be, my understanding is, um, utilities and, and things of that nature. And so I think that's the funding that they're going for is to help support some of that necessary infrastructure for the development of the project. Um, and so my, I, I don't have a ton of detail. I don't know, Commissioner Trask, this was, like I said, this was from the housing task force or the homeless task force that, uh, the city convened. So I don't know what other discussions were had there, but Athena had passed it on to me um, to bring to the commission.
Yeah, you know, they, they've done some amazing things down there at, at Community Lifeline, and they're doing a great job. Um, I just have some other concerns. And so I would like to just maybe hold off for a while um, to see how they do with like the recovery cafe and things like that. So they've got a lot of things on their plate. And, um, I don't know. Time. I would, I would like to give it a bit of time.
Since we don't know exactly what it is that they're asking for, and in my opinion, it's in Commissioner Trask's uh, backyard, I will defer to Commissioner Trask and, and go for extending time. Uh, backyard, I will defer to Commissioner Trask and and go for extending time. To find out more and and bring it back to us in the future.
Right, and and if it's just for utilities and things like that, I can understand that one.
Can we agree that if it's just for utilities and stuff to move forward, Commissioner Trask?
Sure.
Well, what I was gonna say is, um, you know, we can, we, I think it'd probably be worthwhile to have Athena come present on the on the project. Um, I don't want to say for certain that it's just for utilities, because I mean, I think that's, I think that's a big part of what they need. But I don't want to, I don't want to suggest that that that's the only thing that would be funded through this, and so. Um, if if there are some additional questions, then I think it would probably be more appropriate for Athena to answer those than me try to. Um, come up with, come up with the responses on their behalf.
Fill in the blanks.
So we can have her here next week, next Monday?
Uh, yeah, we can, I can close back uh the loop on that with her and see what works for them.
Yeah.
But just we are good with the Youth Connection moving forward?
Yes.
Okay, I think uh I think Terry sent me a draft, so I'll get with McKenzie on that for tomorrow.
Yeah, I saw her little animated thumbs up too.
Yeah. Great, that's all I have.
All right, anything else? How about a motion?
Move your second.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. See you tomorrow.